Good evening. Call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for April 6, 2022. Will everyone please rise for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reading of our mission statement. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our citizens to become responsible global citizens. May I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Questions and comments from interested citizens? We have one speaker this evening, Ms. Lorraine Loaning, and she will be speaking on matters of the February 9, 2022, regular Board of Ed meeting.
Hello. My name is Lorraine Loaning, and I am a district resident. I believe that there is no better way for a citizen to spend tax dollars than to fund education, particularly public education, whether it is for selfish reasons like the trend that well-funded school districts typically see higher property values, or for altruistic reasons, like contributing to a better society where kids from today will do great things we can't even conceive right now. Public education is one of the most worthwhile things to spend money on. At public hearings on the budget, I routinely vocally support the budget. I do not mind spending tax dollars. However, even I have my limits. At the regular Board of Education meeting on February 9, 2022, specifically Agenda Item 15.21, stipend for Summer Bridges 2021. This stipend was dispersed to administrators and totaled $20,000. This was approved unanimously and without discussion, two things that are unfortunately common for this board. This stipend was awarded six months after the completion of the Summer Bridges program, which is very unusual. Typically, this board approves stipends before work is performed. When it is approved retroactively, it is generally backdated a couple of weeks, not months. Stipends are routinely awarded by this board. For example, this board appoints co-curricular advisors for clubs, coaches for athletics, and mentors for new hires. They are all appointed prior to work being performed, and the rate of pay is clearly noted in the agenda. Everyone knows what they are getting paid. The last examples I will note are the programs that were run last summer: Summer Crusaders, Summer School, and Summer Bridges. For all, you appointed staff: teachers, monitors, food services, et cetera, prior to the start of the programs running, and everyone knew what they were getting paid. Notably, for Crusaders and Summer School, you appointed an administrator and clerical staff, but not for Summer Bridges. All of these resolutions to appoint can be found on the district website in the Board Doc sections. You can search Board Docs, or if that's too cumbersome for the esteemed members of the board, I will happily email them to you. I have two questions. Why did you approve the stipend for administrators six months after the program ended, when precedent would indicate that this should have been appropriated before the program began? And secondly, why was there no discussion about that break from precedence during the meeting? We are a little more than a month from Election Day for some of you. Please, let me be... I am someone who is ridiculously pro-school budget, but why should I trust any of you with the purse strings based on that vote? Dissent is a great part of the American experiment. Please, please dissent once in a while. Please, someone second a motion for discussion purposes. Please, someone ask questions. Please, as you are speeding through the agenda, think about how you are representing us and if you are honoring those who voted for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Update on questions and comments from the previous meeting from interested citizens. I believe we had two speakers at the last meeting.
We did, and I think there was... We rolled back the tape, and there was one question, and I think the question was from a parent who asked, "Why can we not opt out of," I guess it's health class, or any section that we wanted? So I did speak with Dr. Hassler, and he does have a response for that.
So, in... In 2019, the State Education Department published guidance on HIV/AIDS prevention education, and this actually is an overview related to Commissioner's Regulations 135, which pertains to HIV and AIDS education in health class. Basically, the guidance breaks down AIDS and HIV prevention education into three categories: the natures of the disease, the methods of transmission, and the methods of prevention. According to Commissioner's Regulation 135.3, it states that "no pupil shall be required to receive instruction concerning the methods of prevention of HIV and AIDS if the parent or legal guardian of such pupil has filed with the principal of the school, which the principal attends, written request that the pupil does not participate in such instruction with the assurance that the pupil will receive such instruction at home." So the students will basically be allowed to be exempted from that portion of HIV and AIDS prevention education. The natures of the disease portion and the methods of transmission portion are the portions that they're required to attend, but they do have the ability to be able to opt out of the methods of prevention portion of that instruction.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Two housekeeping notes I apologize I should have stated earlier. Sergey Kueifman and Jamel Evans are unable to join us this evening, and I'm not sure yet about our student board representative, so I'll stay tuned. Hopefully, he's coming. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 23, 2022, meeting?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have an approval of the revised student calendar. Mrs. Rodriguez, do you just want to mention?
I do. So, we built our calendar, and the teacher's contract is 183 days. We're at 184 days. So that requires us to give back a school day, and so we are going to amend the calendar. And now, May 27, which is Memorial Day weekend, will be a holiday, and schools will be closed. That still gives us 183 days, and if for some reason we have snow, because it's possible it happens in April, or we have any weather-related closure, we still have three days because the minimum number of days is 180. But we currently now have 183 on the calendar. So again, May 27 will be a day off, and it will be part of Memorial Day weekend, so we wanted to make sure that the community knew that.
Okay, great. So there'll be a four-day weekend for that. May I have a motion to approve the revised student calendar?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, on the agenda, we have a presentation. I'm so excited for our brickpaver, to Ms. Lorraine Carroll. Forgive me, because I have... I'm gonna go on my phone here just to... I had a little note written on here. So, the Board of Ed would like to acknowledge Lorraine. It is a long time coming that unfortunately, due to COVID, we have not been able to see you and present the lovely brick to you, but we wanted to be able to recognize Lorraine. Lorraine was a board member for our school district for a little more than eight years. She would have been rerunning this year had she still been here. She's been instrumental as a huge voice in our community for all of our students, but most importantly, for our special needs population. So she was a great asset to all of our students when she was here. She was a member of the policy committee, the audit committee, the visitation committee at one point, and also the temporary annexation committee that was in existence at a certain point in time. So we were sad to have lost Lorraine when she resigned her position on the board for moving out of the school district. Like I said, she was an asset to us, so we would like the opportunity to thank Lorraine for her endless commitment to the students of the Monroe Woodbury School District and commemorate her with a brick that we have.
Yes. It's heavy. It's an actual brick.
I know, and I'm glad I'm... No one's gonna hit me. Promise. And it says, "Lorraine Carroll, MW Board of Education trustee from 2013 to 2021. Thank you for your strong commitment to our students and community, and your work on the policy and audit committees during this service."
Oh, well, thank you so much.
I am tan, yes. That's the other reason it's taken so long. She's never in New York anymore.
Thank you. I hate the backsmash here.
Thank you. We're gonna leave that in Andre's hands. Everyone looks so good. I didn't even recognize you. You look fantastic.
Good to see you.
I mean, I looked like before.
Now we're... Yes, I'm going to hold you guys to that. Yes, we are. All right. You are.
Thank you so much, Lorraine. We're happy that we are finally able to present it.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, you're not gonna stay for old times' sake?
No, she just... She's a retired board member.
Like I said, we're lucky I could get her here. She's been in Florida for like the last six months. Okay, so moving on, we have our budget presentation that will be given this evening by Mr. Kravitz in regards to personnel consideration for the budget.
Is that your knee?
No.
It's my knee. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. Are you waving to me?
No, no, I'm just saying maybe lower down the lights a little, or can you see this? Can everybody... Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you for allowing... Now, I can't even see my notes. It's okay, I know. We're done, thanks. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak about general personnel considerations as part of the 2022-2023 budget process. Before I begin, just a few notes of thanks to those in the Human Resources Department, those in the Business Department, as well as payroll, in addition to all of our district administrators and cabinet folks who really helped craft the numbers behind this presentation. This presentation that you're gonna see and the numbers within it are representative of a snapshot in time. Mrs. Rodriguez, on April 20, will be presenting the final budget proposal, which will move some of these numbers away from their draft form. Additionally, this is a presentation that involves people, our people, over 1,600 active people. And behind every number, there's a person who is working for our district, whether you are a bus driver, or safety officer, school monitor, or teacher aide, food service worker, clerical staff, custodian or administrator, whether you work as part of our Buildings and Grounds crew, teaching assistant, or a teacher, or even a substitute, all are part of this personnel budget. So I'm gonna start with district-wide salaries. There are explanations throughout the budget, or this presentation, as to why there were some increases in the overall, so I'll point those out. So as I stated earlier, this is a snapshot in time. This overall district-wide salaries are reflective of a number of things. One primarily is our contractual obligations to our four bargaining units. In this district, we have four bargaining units representing our teachers and teaching assistants in the MWTIA, our clerical staff, our school safety staff, and our food service workers in the MWEA, our school bus drivers, our custodians, and our Buildings and Grounds staff in the CSEA, and our district-wide administrators, and building administrators. Last year, we talked about how all of our contracts were settled for the 21-2022 school year, which allowed us to use real numbers when we were crafting our budget. This year, I'm happy to say that again, all four bargaining units are operating under or will be operating under a settled contract, which is good for everybody. So that's also reflective of the numbers here. And one thing I just want to point out, as I typically do during this presentation, is over the last few board meetings, you've heard us recognize those people who are gonna be retiring from our school district. Typically, when somebody retires, they are often at a higher salary. When they retire, they're replaced usually with a newer employee who may not make as much money. That amount, known as breakage, is also factored into this budget presentation. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna break out just a few areas that will hopefully give you a glimpse into the budget process when it comes to personnel. So I'm gonna talk about safety and security, and has been a theme, not just this year, but in previous years, safety and security is our top priority here, right? Our students can't learn if they're not safe, our teachers can't teach if they're not safe, our people can't get to work, and they won't be here if they don't feel safe. Something that happens often during a school year is needs present themselves, and we have to make decisions as a cabinet and as an administration to determine how we are going to meet those needs. And sometimes, we... Needs present themselves well after an approved budget. So for example, this year, we were all sat in, not this room, typically over in the high school, and we heard people talking about the need for increased presence of personnel, particularly in the form of safety, in our buildings. What we have is we have permanent employees who are school security aides, and we had a number of substitutes who were here, sometimes on an everyday basis, oftentimes not on an everyday basis. So what we decided to do is we added seven contracted school security aides to our budget. What that does is it lengthens the time that they're in our school district. So for some who may have been a substitute, maybe four hours a day, they will now be working eight hours a day. If they were a substitute who worked three days a week or four days a week, because they're allowed, right? That's what substitutes do. They come in when they can. This now guarantees five days of work for our district, which is something that we were looking to do. Additionally, all seven of them, because they are full-time employees, depending on their certain situations, they may qualify for insurance and benefits, and I'll talk about benefits in general in the coming slides. Transportation. So transportation, again, is another area that I just want to focus on, not so much because of necessarily the change, I just want to point out a few things. First of all, I never want to waste an opportunity to plug the continued need for school bus drivers and bus attendants in our district. We've heard it time and time again, right? It's across the country. It's an area where districts are struggling. But what this is reflective of, again, is our contractual obligations. But also, what we did is we put in some new recruitment and incentives for hiring people for this year. And if you've read through the last few Board of Ed agendas, you'll have noticed that there are a number of school bus drivers either under the classified section or as under the substitute section, which is good, because I think a lot of that is directly attributable to some of the incentives that we put in place. But what we also did this year is, again, that we recognized there is a need. And as the world continues to evolve from a technological perspective, I just wanted to look at you for a second, Dr. Vias. One of the things that happens is we have our student management system that needed to speak in a more coherent way with our transportation software program. And we had that this year. It was rolled out this year. But what happened is we needed somebody to sit behind those two programs and make sure that the merger of that information was working, whether it was creating new routes on what probably seemed like a daily basis for some of our people in transportation. Having somebody in that position of, or in a position of school transportation assistant enables us to become more efficient in our routing. If a student moves, if a bus stop is changed, right now, we get that information in Power School, and district administrators can talk to you, and building principals can say, you know, "For years, it was, 'Wait a second, wait a second. I just want to know what bus this child is on,'" in Power School, so when I look them up, it's all the same, and it's coherent, and it's clear. And this school transportation assistant is somebody who will ultimately be responsible for the oversight of that. So that is a position that will be in this budget, in this part of the 3.79% increase. And then instructional, right? We have a large number of staff. I mentioned it earlier, that we have, across the district, we have, you know, basically 1,200 or so full-time staff. We have, you know, another 400, which are inclusive of our substitutes, our coaches. But that all goes into our instructional budget. And one of the themes here, as far as the instructional piece, is COVID, right? It's the elephant in the room that nobody can ever get away from. And in addition to COVID, it was reconciling positions that were added after last year's budget. So again, going back to what I said earlier, as far as the safety officers, as far as the school transportation assistant, there were times during the course of the year where we heard, either in board meetings, or at the cabinet level, or at the building level, that there was a need for certain positions. I'll give the example of monitors, right? We sat here, and we heard that there was a need for extra support up at the high school. We determined that we were going to hire monitors, and as they've been there, you know, because they're helping to support, whether it's oversight of the bathroom, helping to keep the hallways moving a little bit easier, we realized that positions such as those are really important to how we're running a school district. Again, some of those are inclusive of benefits, and so that is part of the reason that there's increased. Obviously, that's just one example, but just from an instructional standpoint. The other piece of general personnel considerations are health insurance, which is part of our fringe benefit package, which I know sounds very fancy. Health insurance is an increase this year of, percentage-wise, just over 14%. And that's for a few reasons, and I have my health insurance expert, OU Health board member to my right, sitting up here, just in case. Yeah, that's you. That's true. Okay. In case there are any really specific, you know, granular health insurance questions. But basically, there are two main reasons why there's an increase. First of all, the cost of the premiums for anyone has increased by 7%. So if you are an employee here, you're going to pay an increase of... Your insurance premium is going up 7%. What also happens is there are, obviously, there are new employees who, you know, some who come with benefits, so that's also part of the percentage change. But in addition, what Orange Ulster Health Plan did is they... There are a number of tiers for our insurance. So in the past, you were an active, single person, for example. You paid, you know, one amount for your... One rate for your insurance, or the premium was a certain amount. Or you were an active family, and it didn't matter how big your family was. If it was two or more people, you paid the same rate. And then there are different rates for people who are active but have a spouse or someone else on their insurance who might be over 65, or somebody who's retired and then has an active, and there are different layers to that. But what they did this year, what OU Health did, is they added a new tier for a family of two. And what that does, it helps, and some people here, you know, in the audience may benefit from that. What it does is you now have, you may have an employee who has one child on their insurance. Instead of paying the same rate as somebody who has a family of six or five, you're paying a lesser amount. If you are an employee, and it's just you and your spouse, and you reach that point where your children are old enough, and you kind of say, "Oh, phew, you're not my insurance anymore." Well, now you're gonna pay a reduced rate compared to a family that is larger. So that is all part of the health insurance amount. And this is a slide for the employee fringe benefits overall. So in addition to health insurance, there is our contribution to TRS, which has increased slightly this year, from about 9.8% to about 10.29%. We actually have a reduction in our contribution to ERS, which is the Employee Retirement System, because when we hire somebody, anybody we hire, whether you're a substitute, whether you're a permanent employee, they have the ability to access the state retirement system. So we have people who have worked in other districts, they're still part of the retirement system when they retire. In addition to that, our workers' compensation, our employee life insurance, vision dental, are all included. But one area that I just want to point out, as far as a large increase, is our Medicare reimbursement. So Medicare is something that our employees, our retiring employees, you know, typically have access to. The rate for Medicare this year is... Medicare rates are typically contingent on cost of living, so the CPI. The CPI has increased, right? So it's higher this year than it was last year. As a result, the cost of Medicare has... The amount that people pay for Medicare has also increased. One of the provisions of the contracts that we have, and it's a very common provision across most school districts, is the opportunity to reimburse Medicare payments. So when that Medicare rate goes up every quarter, as a retiree, you submit, you say, "Here's how much I paid for my quarter as far as Medicare," and then they get reimbursed. Well, as their rates have gone up, then the reimbursement rate for us also increases to the tune of just over $700,000. And that was a big... That's a big part of the overall health insurance or fringe benefit increase. Anything you want to say about health insurance or...
No, I think you got it.
All right, thanks. So this is the total salary in fringe benefits, and this is usually the part of the presentation where I sit here and I say, "Oh, here's what the salary is, and here's what the percentage is as far as the overall budget." That's gonna have to wait until Mrs. Rodriguez does her presentation on the 20th, because that's when she'll be presenting the entire budget, and so we won't know what the exact percentage will be until then. But this is basically the, all the slides combined, your salary, your fringe benefits for a total of $154, just over $154 million. These are some of our finest, whether it's you're at North Main, or at Central Valley, at Smith Clove, or if you're just hanging out at Central Valley, looking over some plans. This is an example of what this is all about, right? It's about our people. Any questions?
I have some questions on the health insurance side. You said the cost of premiums is going up 7% for the staff, right?
Yes. Yep, yes.
Their contribution is going up, but the total is going up 14.45. What was the impetus, or what did they say was really the driving force behind such a large increase?
I'm gonna let you take that one.
So, Michael, you're asking why was the health plan requesting such a large increase in premiums?
Well, if I'm understanding it correctly, if the staff are going up 7%, and this is a 21% increase, that's a pretty significant change.
Well, the premiums are going up approximately 7%. As Matt said, the actual... There's actually multiple premiums. So there's active rates, and then there's retiree rates. And there was a little bit of churn amongst the rates. So overall, for the whole plan, the increase was 7%. But based on the composition of your staff, in other words, if you had, like, there's a neighboring district that has almost all family plans. So if the family plan went up by more than 7%, which it could, you would see a larger-than-7% increase overall.
As an employee?
Well, as a district. And then the employee makes a corresponding contribution. So let's say that's approximately, you know, somewhere between 10 and 15%. So as the rate goes up, the contribution, the part that the employee pays also increases because the premium went up. So that's one factor. You know, there also is the piece where there's a normal churn year over year where people go from single to family, and there's new employees, and as Matt alluded to, we went for, in certain areas, like security, say, we went from sub-employees to full-time contracted employees. So, you know, we have to put in a provision that they may be eligible for insurance and may opt for that. So that's another factor. And then the $700,000, as far as the Medicare, was a big contributing factor as well. So it's... There's a lot of moving parts in there, and I had said early, at an earlier meeting, the health plan wanted a larger increase, and they had recommended a larger increase. And, you know, the directors just sort of said, "Look, there's a large surplus or fund balance with the health plan, so why don't you draw a little bit of that down and lower the premium?" Because we're, again, to put it into context, the NISHIP plan, which is the state plan for all the state retirees, it's, you know, tens of thousands of people, it's much larger than ours, their rate increases were like 11 or 12%. Just the premium increase. But then we have those other factors which come into play. So it's not always a one-to-one. The other thing we're looking at is we're looking at a budget-to-budget increase. So I think if I look at this, we probably were a little underbudgeted in the current year. So that is another contributing factor when you see that big increase. So there's a lot of variables that go into that, but I think it is a large increase, for sure, but health insurance is expensive. We have a very, you know, robust and sort of generous health plan. You know, it's one of those things where we had a few good years, and now we're sort of trending back to, I think, sort of the average tends to be about 7% for health service inflation.
7%? And then, so the 7.45 difference is really where we're talking about new staff and...
The other pieces.
And the Medicare.
Patrick, may I ask, regarding Medicare, please, can I have a very large percentage? So that's the percentage increase, so it's driving the overall percentage. The Medicare for mere years is around a 55% increase. So if you look at the details of all that health insurance, that's inclusive of the Medicare reimbursement piece, which is a very high percentage. So when you average those, the 7% that Patrick's talking about, and the 55% for the Medicare reimbursement, the blended rate is a 15% increase. So I think Michael's trying to get to the difference between the...
Thank you.
Right. In the budget, it's 14, and then, in different pieces of it, 7 is the premium, a piece of it is the change in the employees, a piece of it is the Medicare.
This is not out of line, from what I see. I just wanted to understand the difference between certain numbers, and that was helpful. Thank you.
I have a question, too. Transportation, so the change is the anticipated salary of the bus drivers and staff that you need?
So the... So the, we have our contractual obligations, so we know what our contract obligations are. So they, this year, they have their, their contractual increase. So you, remember you get a, you almost get a, you get a year-to-year increase, so calendar year and calendar year. And then as people get more experienced, there's typically, you know, a step raise for, for some of our employees. So that all factors and it gets averaged out. And then the second thing was the addition of that new employee, our school transportation.
Right, but then you talked about the continual need for bus drivers and attendants. So where is that money in the budget?
That's, that's in there. There are places for that. There are open, right now, we have open routes. So we have people who are substitutes who are filling in those routes. The more people that we could hire on a, on a permanent basis, then the less substitutes we would likely need and that's where that would, would average out.
So you've already budgeted in anticipation of hiring?
In hopes of hiring, yeah.
There, there are also two positions that were previously budgeted under buildings and grounds.
Right.
And are now under transportation. So that also sort of contribute, you see the buildings and grounds increases very small and the, contributed to the transportation being somewhat larger.
Those are our two couriers who drive a bus and drive around.
We don't see that here in the breakdown though, so. And the second question is on safety and security. So the $70,000 is reflective of the seven new hires? At $10,000 or so, aren't they in the 2021, 22 budget though? They were hired now?
They are. I, I would call it a reclassification of folks that were, the appropriations were there to pay them as them or others as substitutes, right? And now we've sort of reclassified those folks as full-time contracted people.
And the cumulative salary of those seven new hires is $70,000 without benefits?
It's, it's not new hires. There's, let's say it's seven people or multiple people, seven FTEs in the current year and we reclassified those seven FTEs as contracted safety officers. So overall, it's, it's a bit higher versus being a sub and an hourly employee versus a contracted person who's, let's say, step one. But, but we were sort of already employing those FTEs just as substitutes. You know, might be multiple people, not necessarily five days a week, as Matt was saying, might be three days, might be four days, but we'd have another sub fill in on the other two days. So it's not a net add of seven.
Got it.
Safety officers.
And that $70,000 is also inclusive, again, of the, of the contractual obligations, what people make from year to year.
I, I was glad to see the add on the, on the seven or additional because this has been a hot topic recently. On average, the, the number of school threats the US receives on a monthly basis is up between 400 and 500% this, this calendar year. And they're anticipating additional risk with the whole Russian thing. And before they invaded Ukraine, they made over 1,000 school bomb threats to Ukraine from Russia, just to disrupt all of the schools and things. We haven't seen that yet, but there's some anticipations. I'm glad to see that we're, we're, we're focused on this and we have the additional people going in there. That's very important.
I have two follow-up questions. The first, in regards to the security was, because I know Matt specifically mentioned that it was hires more so right now for the high school, but I wanted to be clear that it's not necessarily where they're assigned permanently.
No, they were all hired.
That it's as needed in various buildings.
They were all hired as district-wide employees.
Okay, so, so that's, and it's basically what Patrick is saying, that we had five that were subs that are now permanent and we added two. Is that what it is? Because I'm just trying to clarify from what Dawn said.
I think it was, it's seven.
Right.
Seven, I'll call it seven sub-FTEs.
Okay.
Were sort of reclassified as seven contracted safety officers. So we now have a commitment from them of five days a week.
Okay.
Hours a day. We, you know, we're, we're committing to them as far as that, that work as well.
Okay, got it.
They're now eligible for other benefits and there is a slight salary increase with that.
Okay. It was just the contracted.
Right.
That we were focusing on. They were there, now they're contracted in.
Correct.
Next year's budget.
Right.
Got it.
Exactly right.
Okay, and then my transportation question was based off of, it was similar to what Suzanne was asking as far as the projected perhaps increase. But aside from going back into board docs and seeing all of the hires that we've had, how are we in regards to the hires that we've already done, either pre-incentive or with the incentive of new drivers?
So that's a great question. I think what ends up happening is, and again, if you, I'm not saying, you know, hey, go back and look at board docs, I'll do that for you. But what it, you know, tonight, you'll see some hires and then you'll see a resignation.
Correct.
So again, it's a, it's a field where you see a lot of movement. So for, you may get one or two, you know, new hires and then you may have one or two people who leave for, for a variety of different reasons. And that gets played into a whole host of reasons, whether it's where they live, a new job, or, or something different, or they really want to just enjoy being retired because there are some who, you know, kind of retired and then they became, you know, school bus drivers. And some are saying, you know what, I'm going to go and enjoy my retirement. So the incentive, i- if you talk to the people who are hired, and when I meet with them, a lot of them, they're drawn here. That, that helps with drawing them in. You know, and it's our job to keep them here and, and train them and, and do that. With that said, can I just plug, can I shamelessly plug one event that we have coming up?
Yes.
On April 23rd.
Oh, I saw that.
On April 23rd, we have a Drive a Bus event and it's, it's, I believe it starts at 10:00 in the morning. Anybody who's interested in becoming a, a school bus driver or seeing what it's like can get behind the wheel of a car with one, or wheel of a bus with one of our trained professionals on, on that Saturday morning.
We're all going to show them.
Board members included?
Yes.
Board members included.
I'm going, it's already on my calendar.
We technically can't get hired though, so there's that.
That's fine. I just, I just wanted to drive a bus.
Okay, any other questions from anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on with committee reports. I'll go first for policy. Our next meeting is actually as soon as we return from spring break on April 19th. So that is our next scheduled policy meeting. Dawn for audit?
Yeah, our, same, same vote. We, our next scheduled meeting is.
Not until June?
Yeah.
June 9th. But I, but I will note that we are, the district is involved with our new hire, with our internal auditor. So we have had that in-house, that's been interviewing various key stakeholders within the district and a few of us board members as well have already had our interviews with the internal audit committee. Their plan is, forgive me because I don't have my notes in front of me, that they will present to the audit committee what their report is at that 6/9 meeting and then it will be reported publicly to the rest of the board and the public at our June 15th meeting, I believe, is the week after. So once we have that report in-house with Patrick, they will look at it, it will go to audit and then it will be given out publicly. That's our timeline. So knock wood, we'll be able to stick to that, but that is what the auditors kind of told me the other day when I met with them. Visitation?
Same. Our next scheduled visit is with North Main on the 25th and nothing has taken place since our last update.
And facilities?
Same. Yeah.
Yeah, our next, we actually did add a meeting for facilities on April 27th. So again, after spring break, we have a meeting that was added for April 27th. So those are our next meetings. Unfortunately, I was able to reach out to Omar, our student board representative, and unfortunately, he is not able to meet, meet tonight, so he is not here, so I do not have a report for him. So we're going to skip that agenda item. And moving on to personnel for Matt?
Thank you very much. Before I ask approval for the items listed under personnel, I just want to point out one person who's going to be leaving us from Sapphire. Some of you may have had, or your children may have had him as a teacher. That's Mr. Tom Costa, who started his career here in 1999, which is a lot of years. So congratulations to Mr. Costa and we thank him for all he's done. And with that, I respectfully request approval for the items. Just under personnel.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Patrick for business and financial?
Thanks, Stacy. I would also respectfully request the approval of the items under business financial and I would just point out a donation, find it, of $5,000 from the Target Corporation to Central Valley Elementary School. So I'd like to acknowledge and thank Target for that. Yeah, nice, nice time.
Thank you.
A motion?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to accept the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education 14.1 to 14.4?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports by board and central office, Dawn?
I think since our last meeting, I was able to attend the, the High School Musical and I thought it was phenomenal, so great job to everybody involved in that. And thank you to Mr. Kravitz and Mr. Cahill for your presentation and to everybody for all your work that went into the presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Dawn?
Everyone enjoy the upcoming holiday. I will. That's it for me.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for the budget presentation, Mr. Kravitz and Mr. Cahill and your staff, because I know what a great deal of work goes into doing something like that. It's a huge process and I'd like to wish everyone an enjoyable spring break.
Thank you. Lisa?
I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday ahead and enjoy the break. Thank you.
Thank you. Hargov?
Happy spring break, everybody.
Thank you. Eric?
I saw James and the Giant Peach also, it was great. I had the privilege of doing the music booster interviews last week, which is just an unbelievable event. I, I interviewed a group of seniors with Chris DeBorski and I've interviewed a lot of different grade levels, but to sit with our seniors and listen to the unbelievable achievements that they've accomplished at such a young age is, I don't know, I, I feel very inferior when I sit with them because they are just unbelievable kids. So congratulations to all of them. I went to the Smith Clove Art Show last night, which you would think that it was opening of a new exhibit at the Met with the number of people who were there. I think everybody was just excited to be there in person, celebrating their kids' artwork, which was awesome. Finally, congratulations to Mia Lynn Cravetto, who's an eighth grader in the middle school, who won the Orange County Stop Hate Contest in the seventh, the grade seven through nine category. The contest was established by the Jewish Federation of the Greater Orange County to promote tolerance and understanding through education. And she will be recognized at their annual Stop Hate Symposium on April 26th. So congratulations to Mia. Well done.
Thank you. Patrick?
Okay, I, I just want to actually go back for a moment to the, the budget presentation. There was one, Dawn, you had asked about the increase and there was one piece where the director's salary formerly was budgeted or there was appropriations under professional services, that's now a salary budget code. So that's a piece that I forgot to mention. So that also is driving that budget-to-budget increase. So I, I think of it as an overall budget, we break it out, sometimes we stay salaries and non, non-payeral items. So, so that's another piece of the explanation for the increase in safety. And sorry about that, but I just, I couldn't let that go.
Okay, thank you.
We missed something.
Yes.
But other than that, have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
So you didn't leave that out, I left that out. So, you know, so that, that'll just, put it out there, but that's a good point. Thank you for clarifying. I have nothing. Have a wonderful break. Well deserved for everybody next week.
Thank you. Dan?
Still daylight out. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you. Anthony?
Enjoy the time off and have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. Michael?
I want to reiterate the support for our booster programs, PTA programs. It's really great to see. James in the Giant Peach was fantastic. And I also participated with Mr. Verone for the music boosters scholarship reviews and it was fantastic. The fifth graders are just so much fun. And I want to wish everyone a happy, healthy and fun spring break ahead and have a good evening.
Thank you. Elsie?
I want to remind everyone that on Friday, April 8th, is MW Autism Awareness Day. Let's light up the district with kindness. Wear blue, yellow, any color of your choice in support of autistic voices. And finally, I just want to wish everybody a happy spring break. It's so well deserved. Get some time and rest. Mock trials, that's right.
I have it.
No, but I purposely didn't say anything because I didn't, like.
So I did, I did get the opportunity to watch the high school. Thank you, Eric. Thank you for, for looking.
Like, and I, I intentionally like, didn't even bring that up.
So I did get to attend virtually, this high school students had a mock trial. They played against a school, the high school in Highland Falls. We beat them, which is not a surprise because we're just so, that great. But the kids were awesome. It was three hours. You would have thought that you were listening to attorneys. Their ability to argue a point was phenomenal. So I was really, really happy that I got an opportunity to watch them. Thank you, Eric, for reminding me.
And the math team, I, I mean, the math team, I think they're still competing though, I think, right?
They competed Saturday. I don't know the results came out yet.
Oh, I haven't, I haven't heard yet.
Can you check?
I, I'll find out. Yes.
I think the mock trial though, too, they have, they're going on to regionals, correct?
I think that they won regionals and now they go to the state.
Now they go to the state, right?